President.
Could the court please read the heads from our last meeting?
I only motion that we stop the minutes a little bit.
I second that.
Seconding that is written, call roll.
Counselor Patrick Sullivan?
In favor.
Counselor McGraw?
In favor.
Mayor Matt?
In favor.
Court of law, please.
Thank you, Mayor. To my understanding, I do not have a specific report due to the multiple public hearings that we have, but I do have several announcements to make. First, I wanted to announce and make the council aware that we have hired a part-time assessor. Several months back, we posted the position for a part-time assessor and we received three applications, two of which were qualified candidates. Myself, Director of Finance Mike Metzner and Janice Meyer, who act as the clerk to the assessor, interviewed both candidates and I selected Tina Demetriades. Ms. Demetriades comes in with 20 years of assessment experience and 15 years as an assessor, and more specifically as a city assessor. Which is, you know, as you can imagine, slightly different than being a town or village assessor. She has worked in cities such as Troy, Schenectady, Amblin's Falls, and a few others. Felt that she was the best fit for our city's administration and she will officially begin her part-time assessor duties on November 5th. But she has been in the building already, has been in the office, and has kind of started to get working already. So she'll be in probably once a week up until that time. There's, uh, it'll be basically a budget neutral provision in hiring that, in hiring Ms. Demetriades and she will work no more than 20 hours per week, or 40 hours bi-weekly for a bi-weekly payroll. And will continue with part-time status for the city. My second announcement is the water and sewer department is going to be starting some of their annual work coming up for the fall. First will be the fall flushing. That will begin on October 24th and it'll last approximately three weeks. So we're starting on the Wednesday, October 24th, because we do have bulk week coming up next week, which is another announcement down the line here. But we don't want to start the flushing while we, obviously, are in the middle of bulk week. So once Port Skylar area is cleaned up from the, from the bulk, we'll start the flushing down in Port Skylar and start to move north across the city. We have been doing flushing throughout the year, especially with the new water mains being put in. We've been constantly flushing the lines and so on, so we'll continue with that. Once that is completed, we will then begin with the catch basin cleaning. Approximately one-third of the catch basins in the city will be vacuumed out. In the past, we have used cahos as vac trucks, so we've got to call into that to make sure that they can accommodate our schedule. Also calls into other municipalities that we do have shared services agreements with. We're also coordinating with the Arsenal on a couple of different things. To do a shutdown so that we can replace a hydrant on EAB and 8th Street. To replace that hydrant is going to be pretty, pretty time extensive and requires that one of the buildings within the Arsenal needs to be shut down. So we need to put several calls into them and we have a meeting set up next week to be able to coordinate to have that replaced. So that will take place within this timeframe as well. And the Arsenal will also be doing their, their annual flushing after we are done with dogs. We request that they do theirs after dogs. So I'll keep everyone posted on those specific dates for those two things. But again, if during the flushing you experience any sediment or dirty water, we ask that you please run the water for five minutes as the, you know, again, the flushing is to release sediment from the, from the lines. If it does continue, please contact the water department or my office. Next is there, there are several events over the next few weeks at city facilities, so I wanted to make everyone aware of what they are. They could be very heavily attended. These are not all city-sponsored events, but I wanted to make everyone aware because they are on city property. The Chili Cook-Off is this Saturday, October 20th at the Dome. The Democratic Picnic is on Sunday at Hudson Shores Park. The PTA Dance, this is the second annual PTA Dance for all Waterbury Elementary School students, will be held at the Dome on Friday, October 26th. And then the annual Halloween Parade will take place on Sunday, October 28th. The parade will begin at the parking lot by the pool and they will march to the Dome and all activities will take place in the dome. I don't know the time of the Halloween Parade. And again, next week is the city's Fall Bulk Week. So we will have two to three trucks out picking up bulk items. On the city's website tells you what can go out and what cannot go out. We ask that you follow those rules and again, it's a imaginary four foot by four foot by eight foot box. Anything larger than that may not be picked up. You may be picketed. And again, this is for Waterbury residents only to place their bulk items outside for pickup next week. Obviously, because it is bulk week, we do get behind. So if you're just putting out your regular garbage, it's likely that it won't be picked up on the exact date that you're used to having it picked up. We usually run about a day behind because of the volume of debris. And we also will not have lawn and weed picked up next week because we just won't have the time to be able to get to it.
That is all that I have for this evening. Old Business?
In Old Business, we have public hearing number one. A public hearing for the purpose of hearing those persons who wish to be heard regarding proposed local law number six for the year 2018. A local law to amend Chapter 230 Sewers of the Code of the City of Waterbury regarding establishing and imposing sewer rents for the period of November 1st, 2018 to October 31st, 2019.
Welcome to accept public. We'll open the public hearing and just want to introduce the, this is a lot of words for sewer rating.
Yes, so at the last meeting last week, I did do a presentation on each of the water and the sewer budgets, which is what drives the rate numbers for the sewer fund. So the sewer funds, we're looking at a 4% increase in the flat and metered sewer rates. I did mention at the presentation that we do have vacant buildings in the city and we do have vacant units in the city. And what that means is for instance, if somebody owns a two-family home, they live on the first floor and the second floor is not rented. Previously, they were able to not have to pay their water and sewer bill. If we charged properly based on unit throughout the city, it would decrease this tax, this rate increase. So it would go down instead of being at 4%, it would go down to 1% just from those specific rates. Well, that said, the rate based on this, based on the 4% increase for flat rate is $190.16 for the year and the metered rate is $4.32 per thousand gallons for the billing period. The billing period is November 1st of 2018 through October 31st of 2019.
Would anyone like to speak on the topic of public hearing?
Here again, wasn't there a practice before that the city water department come up and check the water right off the building?
For the vacant buildings, yes.
Vacant buildings?
For vacant.
And you're still intending to charge those vacant buildings?
Yes. Yes, again, the, the charges that we have for the, the water and the sewer department are really infrastructure charges. They're not just for usage of water before the infrastructure that it takes to deliver it, prepare it, and especially in sewers, you know, added to that is also stormwater, which none of us certainly have any control over.
Do you believe it should be the full rate?
Yes.
Are you believing it should be? Because we're not using any water.
Correct.
He's basically, there's, there's a good argument for the infrastructure and the fact that it's there whenever they need it. What about the, if there's a, is there a vacant building where they have, they had to wait down time before they were charged for water?
So previously through this, you, if you had your water off for the entire billing cycle and you weren't building, you greatly reduced rate. So if you, you know, again, the billing cycle, each time we send out a bill, so it's November 1st through the end of April and you're building back, so if you were off that entire time, you did not have to pay the bill. If you were on at any portion of that, you had to pay the bill.
And how many units are we talking about?
About 170.
Are we talking about vacant buildings or are we talking about units?
Well, combined.
About 200 combined. I think it was 26 vacant buildings and about 170 units.
In most of these 170 units, they have not received a water bill before.
They've received a water bill, but not for all units. Some had in the past, they would receive a water bill and they would come in and say that they had been.
So they're all be surprised when they get a bill?
I think some of them were surprised this year when they got a bill and came in and said, I had a form previously that said I would have to pay this.
They're not part of that, well, they're not part of that number now.
Correct.
So we still have 170 vacant apartments or units that are.
A lot of the ones that were coming in saying, so were people at, were the one property? So they may have at one point had their juice bill for X property and then for Y property, they tried to do the same thing because we don't use that anymore. It is not re, excuse me, not really a policy, I believe.
Yeah, there's no legal standing to reduce the bill. You either gotta bring it up to everyone pays the same thing or change the law to have a reduced rate. It's a public hearing. It's a law, yeah, yeah, sorry.
Well, there's been a question.
Well, it's official public hearing, you gotta show someone actually told.
Yeah, I think there's not even time on it.
Not even time, you don't have time?
My question is, boy, you ran 1,512,000 Waterbury, just have a question in regard to this. Do you, do you think that this could be possibly challenged in a court of law? Fact that the resident does not use any water, I realize the service is there, but there's no use. Is that thought and given? Think you challenge again? Well, sir, do you think it's a legitimate question?
It is? My answer is yes, it could be. We can challenge it now. Right now, there's no law saying you can have a reduced rate, so.
No, after you pass your whether slice it, if someone wants to bring it to court.
What would they, what would they bring us to court for? That they don't have, they're not using the water?
Exactly.
But it's avail, but it's available to them, correct?
Well, we understand that the service is there. We understand the ladder is there and all the infrastructure is there for use.
We're on sewer right now. That makes a difference to your question.
Sorry. So we're not using the sewer? The infrastructure is there.
We've got an open public hearing on the sewer.
Okay, I'm too.
I'm just trying to make sure that it's not affecting your question. You keep saying water and the adwords and stuff.
Well, you're, you're charging for both, but okay, I don't see what you're saying. You just want to talk about sewer, not water.
I'm just trying to make sure, you know, that that's this topic. In 10 minutes or so, we're going to tell them the water, that's.
Okay, we're talking about sewer. The infrastructure is there and the sewer line is there. The homeowner is not using it and you want to charge it because it's there, because the ladder is there.
Well, they are using it. The question was, should we charge a vacant unit? But there's only one sewer line to the building.
That's true.
So the infrastructure is being used and we're splitting it amongst the eligible units. That's the basis of this.
If there's only one war or one apartment, does that make a difference?
Only one floor apartment of the two.
No, the one family home, say, say.
I would assume they'd be using their water in the sewer?
Sorry, I can't read it.
I'd be assuming they would be using their sewer if it's just one.
Well, suppose not have a home and I don't want to live.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Say it's vacant, though.
Vac, I'm sorry.
Oh, vacant one family, yeah. It's this question.
If you remember from the presentation last week, I believe $560,000 of that come, of the cost for that budget comes from Albany County Sewer District. So we don't really have necessarily control over cost of that and infrastructure and stuff. So it's a burden for everyone in the community.
My question is, I guess it's a legal question, because the city have a right to do that. Could it be challenged in court of law? Something maybe to pick about?
I think anything could be challenged, but this, you know, obviously, the ordinance and the local law is what, is what drives it. I mean, it could be challenged, but the law is accepted and it is, it is law and enforceable.
All kinds of laws are passed and are challenged. I mean, I'm just sitting down the road. What else?
Mr. Uvain, we have a perfect, exceptional rate councilman. A councilman, ever, city council.
I didn't hear a response.
See, the, if you go to the comparison of National Grid, they have a basic charge for anybody's, for infrastructure for their service. Correct? So you have a base bill for National Grid and then on top of that, you have the usage.
Right, yes.
But, but when that vacant house that we talked about, there's, and there's several vacant houses, homes around, on top of that, when that vacant house has their power cut off, they no longer receive the utility bill at all, not even for infrastructure, which again, is probably shared by everybody else. So at one, at, at, at the spot, I see the rationale for the infrastructure and how we're doing it. And at the other hand, maybe if you're looking at a National Grid type scenario, National Grid, you don't get a bill. I, I find, I, and I am wrestling between the two because I know like I'm picturing a vacant house right now on, let's say, the one on Broadway. What is it? Sixth Street, you know, there, there is a vacant house. We're trying to get it rehabbed. Now you're.
Even more reason for rehabbing.
More reason for re, well, more reason to rehab it if there's anybody who wants to rehab it, that's for sure. But even if they tore the building down and it's a vacant lot, the infrastructure is still there, but there's no charge to it, except there is a, what, is there a bill for a vacant lot?
There is, yeah.
It's like a dollar, it's like five dollars, eighteen dollars or something like that.
I, I just want to say if we're comparing apples to apples, National Grid makes a profit versus we don't. So I think that that should also be taken into consideration. I mean, all the properties owned in the city, or all the properties in the city are owned by taxpayers. So, you know, just because the infrastructure, or just because you're not necessarily using the water, doesn't mean the bill isn't coming in.
So does anyone else from the public want to say anything? Since it's a public hearing? No? Okay. Well, then we'll close the public hearing. And there's some feedback from this one that is from here to consider a, not a full rate. Does that summarize what we're talking about?
Okay, so.
So if we are changing from the way it's written on this public hearing, corporation counsel, do we have to add another one?
Yes.
Does that no matter what the changes are or?
Yes, a subsequent change to the local law has to be presented against the downtown council. There's got to be resolution advertising for a public hearing. There's got to be another public hearing.
Are we within our category? Or are you remember?
There wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to vote. If we made another change, wouldn't we have to hold on?
Like leaving the first one?
Correct.
I don't really make sure the charge is same. But I can see where we could use some extra money.
I think it'd be more powerful if, if a lot of people took it, if they felt that it was an infrastructure charge as opposed to the same rate as everybody else.
Is this where this would reside? The authority and charge of making a property a set amount would be in this law every year? Would we have to have another law? This would suffice, just this one?
Location? Yeah, I mean, this is the law that would establish whether they can or cannot, and what it is, and what it's.
Gotcha, gotcha. So there's nothing we can do as we sit here. Make the same, we're going to say it's half. Is this still counts as a public hearing?
We have to redraft the last question.
Yeah, I think I answered a lot.
All right. Can I ask you for your?
You can ask, yeah. You still have one more chance.
I'm saving that.
Can't get it out of my mind, you guys do.
Okay, well, let's, since it's a related topic, let's go to the water public hearing.
And public hearing number two. Public hearing for the purpose of hearing those persons who wish to be heard regarding proposed ordinance number 1988. An ordinance of the City of Waterbury, New York, amending Chapter 266, Water of the Code of the City of Waterbury regarding establishing and imposing water rates for the period of November 1st, 2018 to October 31st, 2019.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing and you can intro it as far as the proposed rate and it has the same topic of charging vacant and unoccupied units.
So again, last week at the last meeting, I presented the proposed water budget. Within that budget, it does not call for a rate increase. So that keeps the rate for metered at $3.95 per thousand gallons. That is the in-city metered rate. The out-of-city metered rate has been increased to $4 per thousand. The flat rates stay, again, stay flat at $358 for in-city dwellings and for out-of-city dwellings is $394. The one change in here from previous years is in Section B, number three, vacant houses and other vacant buildings with water turned off at the service entry will be charged $358 per year for the billing period, which is the same as those that have the water turned off. So with these, with these numbers in here as the flat rate, there's no, there's no increase to the in-city property owners or humans that are living.
So if anyone else to speak on the topic now, it's, although it's similar, it's the water. Do you want to have the same comment logged?
Well, I think the fact that you're talking about water, you're talking about a product that you're receiving, that you're not receiving when it's turned off and you anticipate I'm charging people $350. If I for one was in the situation, I would definitely go afford to have it. Charge me for something that I'm not receiving, even though it's available.
Gotcha. So you were trying to trick us at the beginning of our legal position earlier?
A very trick, actually.
All right.
So if we don't accept this, then our sewer rates are going to go up also. Is that what you're saying? Once we draft a new bill?
Yeah, so then.
Then our rates will probably go up when we do this.
Through the pot, yeah. So the, the sewer rate would, right now, the sewer rate is at 4% increase and that's with, that's with charging the vacant, so yes, it would, it would change. It would go up. The water rate, if we did not charge the, the vacancies, could possibly go up as well. Let's go back and run the numbers again and see if we can. It would not, yes, it could, it could cause the rate to increase for water.
Are you talking a zero, a zero, or are you talking possibly, yeah, of that number? On the three.
Right now, it's a zero increase, but the, the rate could go up per sign of point. Right.
Take out a portion of these 200 units.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Or we look for other areas to cover?
Yes.
Go ahead, Todd.
Todd Smith, 902 19th Street. What do, do we know what the surrounding communities do with their vacant properties as far as water and sewer is concerned? Do they, do they charge for the vacant units?
So there's a minimum charge. Most of the surrounding areas have meters on theirs, so they charge an infrastructure charge and not for the product itself.
As far as our, the city, Waterbury is concerned, compared to those surrounding communities, where do we fall as far as like what the average homeowner or property owner pays out in the water and sewer yearly? Where do we fall compared to the rest of them?
Well, we missed you last week.
Sorry.
That's right. But.
Football's over.
Yes, so we, we are basically compared it to Albany, Troy, Rensselaer, Cahos, and the Village of Green Island. All similarly structured and again, with water and sewer, we all have CSOs. We're all along the river, so comparable. We are right in the middle. We're actually, if you did the average of, of each of those, we are just below the average. But we fall pretty much right in the middle from those communities.
And that falls, because I know there's always been a lot of talk about a flat rate, metered rate, and the arguments for and against either way. And those, those communities are, took a little bit of everything all the way around, right? There's some that are metered, some that are.
The majority are metered.
Okay, that's good. And then just on this particular point, wouldn't this, if we did charge, whether it's the full rate or three-quarters of the rate or two, whatever the rate is, wouldn't that also encourage some of these homeowners to fill those vacant properties? I mean, we've got over 200 vacant properties around, roughly 200 vacant units total in the city. Wouldn't that help, you know, let, let give them a little more incentive to maybe fill some of these properties that they're just sitting on? I know there's a vacant property charge that goes in, it could roll into their tax or and so on, but maybe it's not such a bad idea. Number one, it would help with this 4% that we're looking at. Number two, it would help to fill some of these properties, which could help bring in some more local business, which I kind of think it all goes a little bit hand in hand. So I don't think it's such a bad idea to actually look at what you're proposing. Maybe not the full rate, but just in general saying that I think it could have a nice ripple effect to a positive, even though it may seem negative to that homeowner themselves.
Todd, just to answer, just on one, one part of that, and I agree with you on the other half of it. The other half is that there are, there are people out there, owner, homeowners, who are not landlords and they don't want to be a landlord. And they would just go, you know, whatever is possible, just to go without a, having somebody to have to worry about. Most of the ones I've talked to, you know, when we talked about this one time before years ago when we were trying to do, you know, bring people into those units and most of them just didn't want to be bothered with it. It's just, you know, getting a tenant, getting a tenant is a hassle.
Completely understand that and respect their decision, but at that point, just because you choose not to have one, doesn't mean you shouldn't have to pay.
That's why I said.
So I, I see a book ways too well.
That's all.
Right, get out of a two-family, right?
If they did make it a one-family house, it would not be charged for two waters.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just saying, just ignore it upstairs, you know?
Yeah, I think, and I think that goes back to the whole part of the city, because it doesn't look good. You know, you're driving around and you see an empty building, you see an empty unit. I mean, let's, you know, if you don't want one, then get, then sell your, sell the building by one family.
No, I think what Charlie's talking about.
But I, I agree with what you're saying.
No, a lot of people, it used to be their parents that lived upstairs or something, that gets on. Okay, they still have curtains in the window. It still looks like somebody's there, but nobody's living there and they don't want to be a landlord, but they don't want to move out of their house, you know?
Right, yeah, I, I agree with that.
Do you think they comment, do you like to get up or can they go?
How long is it?
Go ahead, go ahead. We'll go in front, go ahead. First of all, why do we fall in the middle of the pack more or less? Because of the fact that we own the infrastructure, we own the water, we own the plant. The plant is automated. We should have cheapest water in the Northeast. I don't understand why our water is so expensive. I don't understand why our water is so expensive. Why do we fall in the middle and not belong?
The water itself is actually the cheapest power. But you're, the whole, this whole discussion is paying for the system. I mean, we're really paying for the system here. We have unlimited water.
Once the system is in, it's in, there's very little maintenance other than the plant.
Very little maintenance. This is one of your good topics. You've got the streets torn up for a year here.
We're gonna put more water, I would put some maintenance.
Once it's in, it's in, no, it has to be maintained. We change sizes. We make the turbines.
Why?
Water pressure services, certain areas, they add more usage. Where we had the area up by Whiz, Whizville or Cradell.
That was a problem, you pump up and all that, and I'm talking in general. Once it's in, it's in unless you have a water break. Pipe for the last few years, you can see you have a wood pipe somewhere.
Yeah, I think if you, if you look at the, the expenditures in the budget, it, it kind of tells the story as to, you know, what the costs are for our water. Those expenditures are the, are the cost. It's the infrastructures, the maintenance of the infrastructures, you know, the 100-year-old filter plant that, that processes our water, makes it drinkable, uh, 13-mile transmission main, um, a dam, a pump house, you know, and then all the infrastructure and the manpower to, to maintain that infrastructure.
The water has more infrastructure. Sewers are closer to your, what you're saying, but most of that bill is, we'll have to pay account with you. So sewers closer to what you're saying. The water has a whole enterprise that's running with the, the residual water van and pump house and-
They roll on there.
Costs 3 million dollars according to this budget right now for water.
Here's a question. So if we decide on public hearing number one, the sewer, we can, we can pass that. If we're looking to do only half of this, we'll probably pass one half of this and then do another public hearing on this other half. Yes, no? Are doing both at the same time?
Oh, they don't, they're, they're two separate, so they don't have to be done at the same time. So on, you know, on November 1st, um, you know, you can vote on it as is, um, or it can be changed and it can be voted on. The sewer and the water are two separate.
But they go, the rates go out. That's why I'm trying to do this now.
No, so the bills that go out, uh, the first week of November, that's, that's already been established, that's from last year's rates. So this is establishing the rates moving forward as of November 1st, right? The first bill that you would be affected on with these rates is, you make it. So it does not affect November 1st.
So we have time?
Yes, yes. What we like to do, you know, and again, it's, it's a practice, it doesn't have to be done that way, but what we like to do is to establish the rates as that cycle begins. Um, we, you know, we just have it on November 1st as our, our first meeting in November, so we have the ability to establish those rates, but if they're established at a different time, retroactive back then, um, that has been done in the past.
And I just want to speak in this public forum.
I just have a question. How many water lines go in George family house?
One.
So how do you know the second floor, who is called a vacant, not really using the water?
You, you don't, and there's no way for you to turn the water on. No way for Austin to turn it on.
So four family house, you've got one water line.
Correct.
But they're all regulated by the COs? They have to be inspected?
Correct.
Somebody goes up to the vacant part, he uses the shower and the bathroom and all that. Nobody knows.
More, yeah, yeah. You know, have family over for the holiday, you have one on the second floor, yes, there's many scenarios to that, but yes, we can't, we can't turn the water off to a two-family if somebody's living in one, just because nobody's in the house. You don't have to do that.
But if a family member came from, or holiday and they actually went upstairs to take a shower, you're only, it's, it's still like, you consider it a one-family. If you're talking about a unit, you're talking about 24/7, 3/6 of five years, uh, days a year.
Not by our code or charter, we're not talking about what establishes it as a unit.
Yes, right, so nobody's living.
Certain sizes, kitchen, bathroom.
I have another question. Suppose a person has an apartment, there's no water in the apartment, no sewer in the apartment.
Yeah, I mean, not possible.
It's not. And if you tell the, every apartment, City of Water, Bulleit, has water and sewer in the apartment, they could have done start or renovation and never finished it, and if things like that, you can charge that person the same amount?
Every time they re-rent that apartment?
You can rent it, it's not rentable. They come with a water sewer rate.
For what? So before we, if I can interrupt for a second, before we end the, the public hearing, there's just a typographical error on the ordinance, 19th meeting, which brought my attention, 262A, where it says the rate is, the rate would be the water, showing $3.95 per, it's got a dollar sign, thousand gallons, so I'm just gonna believe that dollar sign. That's a typographical error, so that doesn't mean they have a public hearing.
All right.
Do you have sense of what I'm saying?
It does, yeah. I mean, there's, you could think of a million scenarios, but if we create a million scenarios, it puts the burden back on us, it's just as easy to send them a bill and they come in and let, let places them call. It's not $18 though, or whatever it is you have. So somewhere between 18 and-
How do you determine if, if a house at one time was a two-family and say, my parents upstairs moved out, I, what would I have to do to make it a one-family to cut my bill in half?
So there's certain criteria, um, that, that changes it into a one-family, but to be honest with you, the main feature of it is the kitchen.
Just got the kitchen?
To remove the kitchen for it to be considered now a key one.
I know where you're gonna start.
All right. Is there any more on that? I'm gonna close it and then, I'll close the public hearing and, uh... Do we need to read a new business?
It's the kitchen, by far, the music kitchen.
Oh, I mean, you can just identify that they're on the, that they're on the agenda and that they're, uh, is the intention to not vote on both today?
Yeah.
Well, we can't for the local law.
Well, I'd like to add, yeah, the ordinance, we don't need to do that, right?
No, the ordinance, if you-
The ordinance we're doing as a formality, we're, uh, we don't have to have a public hearing on an ordinance.
Right, and it's my understanding that we want to place some vote for consideration or adoption of, uh, the first. Yes, so they vote the, vote the November 1st vote, okay? We don't need to.
Well, if we're gonna change it, it makes sense, it should, it should two, two new resolutions that re-advertise it.
If you're gonna, definitely, if we're proposing a change to the local law, yes, then we definitely have to do a resolution.
Okay, but we would have to, we would have to have that changed to the local law.
Yeah.
First.
So we're not, we're not doing the resolution? Though we already are.
Well, if we came up with what it was gonna be? Like real time? All right.
We can come to a decision now, we can work on it over the next two weeks and have it presented on November 1st again, and then have the hearing on the 15th. As long as you receive the local law ahead of time, you could vote on it after that public hearing. The council could vote on it after the public hearing chose. You could have the public hearing on the 15th and vote on it on the 15th, if you're satisfied.
I agree.
Uh, if you were to vote on it tonight, yes. Tonight, technically, couldn't vote on the local law, you haven't, haven't had it on your desk.
All right. So we, we noted that they're on the agenda. We're not reading. And is there anything in appropriations accounting?
There's none.
And do you want to have a public comment period? Anyone want to talk to that?
Doesn't have to be about the water too.
No, all right. We'll open the public comment period.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I'll feel pretty good.
At this time, the council has authorized the public comment period. If you wish to address the council, you must step forward, state your name and address for the record, and you will have two minutes to address the council on any matters you wish. At the end of your comment, the council may reply or choose to reply at a later date, if they so choose.
Okay. My name is Laurie Sylvester, I live at 1904 8th Avenue in Water, Bulleit, and this is a kind of a quality of life question. Um, so there's no animal control officer in Water, Bulleit. That mean, correct in that understanding that we don't have?
Correct.
Okay. So what is the protocol then when a neighbor's dog, dogs bark incessantly and who do I call or how does that get resolved since the neighbor is not willing to, you know?
Do anything.
To do anything, need to say, you know, if it bothers you so much.
Yeah, well, you would contact the police department. We still feel the animal control calls, uh, we're still required by Ag, Ag and Markets laws to dispatch animals and to pick animals up. So we still operate in the police department like we have an animal control, we just don't have a designated animal.
Okay, and this all, I mean, this isn't like, you know, wild animals, this is, you know, domestic neighbor dogs that bark and bark and bark and bark and bark.
Same problem, we'll, we'll handle it.
Okay, so if I call the police, then I could, you know, be guaranteed that they would take some action?
Uh, they would take some action, and I don't necessarily know that it's gonna, you know, be what you're looking for, but, you know, we'll certainly address the issue and, you know, keep it in our mind that every time we go to that house, we know that there's an issue and that it's recurring.
Um, so is there an ordinance, a city ordinance about, you know, that, that, you know, specifically addresses, you know, barking dog or noise ordinance?
There's both, yes.
Okay, all right, so then, all right, thank you.
What time do they bark? Every, any, every time that they're let out or just sort of?
They, they bark, actually, they bark incessantly in the house when the owners are not home. And, you know, houses are close together, so we hear the dogs, you know, constantly when the owners are not there. For hours at a time, we time them.
What kind of dogs?
A boxer and something small, smaller than a boxer.
I don't know. Just curious, what kind of dogs?
Yeah, yeah, I could just-
Okay, so you're gonna call the police and?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Paul, you've ran 1500 12th Avenue, Water, Bulleit. Looks like the comments I made previously, only one was addressed, and that is the potholes on 12th Avenue. I know the objective was to make it better, but they made it worse. Not that I know more than anyone else, when you have a multitude of potholes and you put blacktop into it, it still creates the up and down. What should have been done, the areas should have been cut out and the neighbors put it. Why not do it right? Now, to go further, it looks like my other issues were not addressed and I am consulting the council, Councilman Todd Cressley, Mayor Manning, and Council McGrady to look into these other issues and see if they can be resolved. Grazing of the manholes on 3rd Avenue, is that going to be addressed? Now, I noticed a huge, I mean huge pile of gravel on 16th Street, 8th Avenue. I mean, are these people using the city as a staging area? I mean, who's on top of this? What, you know, I, I don't understand, I don't understand. And also, I'd like to mention the new vehicles that the city bought. Wouldn't it be nicer if it had the seal of the City of Water, Bulleit, put on? Look on the official, it'd be nice and whatnot. Is that, uh, over the law or is that a very expensive deal to do or? Do we have any comments from the council as to what?
As far as I'm concerned, I prefer the seal.
Pardon me?
As far as I'm concerned, I prefer the seal as a, as I think the garbage trucks are waiting now have.
Well, not only that, I mean, you bought new vehicles, every vehicle's a different color. I mean, we run a sports club here, or what, should they make a uniform? I mean, I think the color of previous is green. I don't know. Any, no comments?
I think a response to it.
Oh, okay, I'm done. You don't like me, yeah?
Not true at all.
Thank you. Anyone else? No response? I don't have one at this time, I'll see if anyone else wants to talk though.
I can't, I can't address the, uh, the blacktop issue, I know, I, I've, I've seen it, I was kind of surprised, but I didn't, I don't know much about how they, how they do things up there, and I have not seen the gravel, uh, what was it, on 7th Avenue?
16th Street.
And what?
Between 8th and 9th.
You, they're using it to fill up for the work there on, um-
The dirt piles.
Yeah, they, that, that goes by my house all day long.
Is that Angel?
I think it is. Whoever that's doing all the digging.
Probably Angel.
It's got a big front loader, he come by the house all day, which is, that doesn't bother me, I'm not complaining, I'm just saying, they come down and get the dirt and bring it up a couple of blocks, dump it in, come back, move back and forth.
What do they do with all the, the gravel and stuff down the roadway, or are they, you know? They're gonna remove that too?
That's, uh, they, they contracted with the property owner there to, to use that as a staging area there in the, uh-
Well, the thing about the, the property owner probably doesn't have problems, is probably getting something from it, you know, probably, but I think it's the neighbors who are more objective than anybody else. I, I mentioned it, one, there's an adjacent deal about that, and we, it said they were scheduled to get rid of it before, it was a while ago, but they, we asked, I think it was just when they were finishing up, uh, 3rd Avenue.
Anyone else supposed to speak?
Becky on 2318 3rd Avenue. I just want to say that it's really hard to get on the cyc, on the recycling and the composting program because no one's there near to the phone. And they call, you know, they may call you back like three days later and you're not near to the phone. It just, it just, it doesn't work out, and I just want to make, like, a complaint about that, about how does she make recycling easy? You don't want to make it more difficult for people, um, because I've been trying to get on those programs for a while, and I've just been playing phone tag with, I think his name's Chris? He's nice. But it's, it's annoying and it's an issue. Thank you.
Have you tried to email him?
I have, but then he tells me to call him.
I'm just curious.
Yeah, so-
But in a lot of our, our public works areas, um, obviously the highway garage, uh, for the highway department, recreation department, sanitation and the water, they all have phones in there and answering machines so that you can call, but they're out.
I understand that, I get it, but maybe you like put on a laptop and you just take a lot of form and we drop off a freaking bin, but it doesn't have to be a whole thing.
You just need a bin?
I just need a bin, and whatever you're gonna use for the composting program, the wow program.
So the easiest way to do it, because you, you know that you'll have somebody to, to speak to and they can relay the message, would be to contact the, the clerk's office or the general manager's office, and we'll give the interpretation. That would, that way you're not playing as much role to them and get a raise.
He gave my information like with last month and it's gonna have a bin or anything. So I'm just gonna, this process is annoying, I'm not the only person that's struggled because I'm sure a whole city of people want to recycle. Recycle should be easy, it should make it difficult. Yeah, so I don't know, we have to, I would like to fix the process.
What's your address again?
2318 3rd Avenue, my whole building needs- Twenty-three eighteen Third Avenue, my whole building needs recycled, yes.
And you, you emailed that to Chris?
I did, but, but, I'm not blaming Chris, I think it's just the process. But then, like I said, he tells me to call him, and so I'm just kind of like, well, this is the working out, so, uh... Thank you, I appreciate it. But I really want the process fixed, this is what I'm saying, please process.
We will work to fix the process.
Like, I see them asking, put a little form online, and then they just, like, you know, you shouldn't even have talked to a person, it's like, twenty eighteen, it's pretty easy. Thank you, guys.
So, how many do you think you need, if you're housing a private?
There's three, in twenty-three eighteen. There's three of us, one on the bottom, two at the top, no, two on the bottom, one at the top. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else want to talk?
I'd like a reply to my comment.
Okay, close the public comment period. Everything most urgent meeting?
One. Um, I got a phone call from Christine Greswath. She was crossing, um, Sixteenth Street, and almost got hit with her, um, five kids, she was strolling across, and she had a babysitting service. She, a guy was, a driver was coming through a light. I, I just happened to be at the intersection going, um, east on Sixteenth, and I was waiting at the light, and she was crossing Third, or Second, she was crossing Second, and I guess the guy was behind a bus, but the light stopped, the bus was stopped, ready, then they come left. He didn't see the light, went through the light, he's fell there. Something should be done, because she almost got creamed, and her six kids, you know? You want me to bring it up?
Clear as hell. So, there wasn't an issue with traffic control device, it was just a driver?
I don't know, because I wasn't on that side of the government. Mine was, uh, mine was still red, the others are... I think it turns red, and then you get the error. So, maybe check out the, the device.
You're ready to, actually, I had four things to talk about tonight, but you already took care of two.
You didn't do it like that.
You saw my notes. The pump house, the trees built on, after that pump house got climbed?
On the pump house?
The pool?
Yep, yeah, so we, I contacted two, I was saying before about the back truck, contacted two municipalities today, we'll see if they had a boom lift or a bucket that we can use to be able to trim the trees, if not, we're only have to run a lift vehicle to go around and trim the trees, so...
Did we run trim those trees in the pool, Gary?
We had two trees cut down that were, that were broke during the storm, yeah, that were taken, those trees. Um, so, if we, if we can't get a shared service vehicle, then we're only have to run one. I'm trying to do, without having to spend any funds first.
What, um, what about the tar here on the school?
So, uh, the tar is, was supposed to be cleaned by now, and it had it back. Contacted the contractor, the project manager, contacted the contractor, so I'll follow up with the project manager.
So, maybe suggest maybe a letter to them, you've got ten days, or we'll do it yourself, and just whatever costs, we'll just keep it up?
Yeah, again, it wasn't brought to my attention, and just enough time, we, when it brought to my attention, we may have checked it on that day, otherwise it would help.
No, when we brought it up the first time, they weren't fully paid.
They were, oh, right.
Nobody looked at this?
I'm trust with the project manager. What's a process, like, by which, um, I can cut down my tree in front of my house? I have to get a permit, I have to have a survey now? I have a, I have a crabapple tree that looks pretty for a week, all right? I'll come fall time, springtime, or, um, it's, it's full of crabapples, and it's terrible walking, and free one. The missus would like it down.
So, it's, uh, if it's in the public right of way, the tree, or is it on your property?
It's on my property in front of my house.
You just have to, you just have to come in and get a permit to take it down?
So, from the sidewalk to the road, I'm gonna have to give?
From the sidewalk to the road, you would have to get permission to take it down?
Okay, but from the sidewalk to the house, I can just get a permit?
Yes.
And we're claiming on addressing what's concerned at the next meeting? Is that right?
Can't leave the stump.
Yes.
Can't leave the stump.
No. I usually put dirt over it, I think, I try to mound, it's a mound.
I'll make a motion in the chamber.
Second.
Call the...
All right, man.
Favor.
Councilman Tuckaselli?
In favor.
Councilman McGrath?
In favor.
Why is it here?